Okay.
Are we sure we're hearing it? Because a lot of times we hear that like message that says, I mean, there's nobody else online, right? So I guess it might not.
I do see a recording on my end.
Okay.
So, but we can.
Yeah, sorry.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve your idea to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
Summary of code amendments?
Yes.
That's what I said.
I'll second that much. Oh, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So added. Okay, so we will add that to the agenda. We've got our call to order. We've started our recording, done our roll call. Um, I'd ask for an approval of the minutes from October third, which were online and available. Hopefully any, any changes to those? Any changes last?
I'll move that the October third minutes be approved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, approved. So no hearings today. So that gets us to a briefing discussion, city's three to five year strategic plan. I'll turn it over to staff.
Yeah, um, so I got an email from Chair Nolan to add it to the agenda. Uh, and as per request, it is on the agenda.
Yes, and so, and that is in the packet that was mailed out. So this is something the city council wanted us to understand. And so I added it in. And so it was, you know, it gives you an idea of some of the priorities, including three to five year priorities, key deliverables. And those go down to the last page of their handout, which is create a vision and implement it, which is the plan for the sub area, which obviously the commission's going to be very in- involved in. The multipurpose community facility, develop a plan for financial stability, uh, reclarify meeting the city standards for well-maintained outdoor public spaces and increase in community engagement. So those are all things that are very much a part of what we're doing as a planning commission. And they asked us to have it in. And I don't know if there's other pieces from a staff perspective. But it does give us some idea and we'll be meeting with the council next Tuesday.
They have it right here on the D I O S in front of me, every for all of their meetings. So it must be important.
So I guess maybe, uh, can we make a comment on, on, on this? Uh, I know we saw in some areas of the elements, um, there was a reference. I know this is the economic, uh, vitality section did reference the vision. So I'm assuming that we're going to make similar updates to other relevant sections of the um, elements to reference specific visions if they apply. Right? I've imagined like, I know there was like a one about, at least on this strategic twenty, uh, forty vision about the well-maintained outdoors. That feels like it falls right into the parks and recreation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I think engagement connected community that falls right into some more, uh, I forget which section it was. It talks about the trails. Right? So I feel like it's an easy tie into those sections.
Yeah, I, and I believe that's why council want us to look at it and understand it. So we can incorporate that as in our review of what's going on.
There is a question though, uh, on items to the multipurpose community facility item. I mean, that's not something at all we've discussed here as related to any of our comprehensive plan discussions, right?
It's referenced in the park and rec.
Is it? Okay, okay. Maybe I haven't just gotten to that part. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other additional questions or?
So what were comments? Where is the, uh, this community facility going to be located?
Um, the city owns a number, uh, four parcels, um, in the northwest corner of the city by the Mill Creek Sports Park. Um, they're referred to usually as the D R C C properties.
Is that where the old church was?
Yes.
The Dobson property?
Dobson, Redlar, Church and Cook.
Hmm, good job. Thank you.
D R C C was Dobson, Redlar, Church and Cook. Church being church, Dobson.
Okay, other questions on that strategy? Okay. Then we'd go to briefing discussion, item D twenty, twenty two, forty-four comprehensive plan update? Twenty, twenty-four comprehensive plan update?
Yep.
Okay, hello, everybody. Um, my name is Samantha. I, um, am here with my colleague Emily Larson. Um, we're working with OTAC on your comp plan update. Um, and we have a couple of things for you tonight. Um, one thing that we're going to do is review, uh, some comments received so far. Um, we are going to look at the, um, in design file for the, um, what the plan will ultimately look like. So you guys can get an idea of what it looks like outside of a word document. Um, we are going to talk about the agenda for next Tuesday's meeting with the city council. Um, and get your input on, um, agenda items. And then, um, Justin and Emily are going to cover some of the code updates that are, uh, required as part of the comp plan update. Uh, let's see. I don't have slides. Um, we're just going to talk through some of the comments. We're not going to talk through all of the comments. Um, first, I just want to thank you for your guys' time in reviewing the materials so far. Um, it has been very helpful. Um, and I know the review process hasn't been the most smooth. So I just thank you for, um, your involvement and your help in it. Um, some general, some general updates that you, uh, can expect from the first round of drafts. Um, so all, all things that you guys noted, footnotes, sources, figure titles, um, maps, consistency of acronyms, definitions, formatting of the documents, grammar, just general readability. Um, those have all been kind of smoothed out. Um, um, another thing is that we've, we've taken another look at how, uh, and where some of the main data sets are organized in the document. So there were some comments about redundancy of data sets throughout the elements. Um, some of the housing and the land use, um, community profile data sets were in multiple places. So since then, we've gone and, um, made sure there's less overlap. So housing specific data sets in the housing element, demographic stuffs in the community profile. Um, so that's a bit better organized. Um, it's all related and relevant to these different elements, but, uh, should not be mentioned all throughout the plan. So that's that. Um, so those are just some general comments. Um, we're going to talk about some of the last elements that we received, uh, that you guys received. So capital facilities, utilities, transportation, um, and parks. Um, I will say, uh, transportation is going to be a, a topic on the agenda, uh, for Tuesday's meeting with the city council. So we'll have, um, the transpo group, the transportation consultants, um, here on Tuesday to get kind of, to get into some of the nitty gritty. Um, a number of your guys' comments sparked conversation, further conversation with the city and a little bit of reworking of some of the transportation element. So, um, they'll have some more in-depth updates for you there. Um.
Can I ask? So the agreement was you'd be posting this stuff real time online to the, I think now OTAC webpage as we've moved around.
Yes.
Are the, you mentioned this smoothing out of figures and updates like the transpo. When will that be available?
They, so you guys received access to the SharePoint file last Thursday on the tenth. And I believe that same day they were posted online. The PDFs were posted online.
But, but it sounds like you're saying transpo is doing another update from what like I reviewed on Monday?
Um, no, the, the ten, ten versions have, have incorporated the transportation work.
Okay.
We're just going to cover some of those changes. Um, changes are happening every day, so we're working on them. But, um, okay, so, um, a couple of updates on the capital facilities and utilities elements. Those ones were a bit rough. Those required coordination with the city staff and with service providers. Um, since, um, since the original drafts, uh, one m- missing piece from the capital facility element was a stormwater management facility section. So that's since been completed. Um, the utilities element is now up to date and completed. There was less coordination than we thought needed with service providers. What we really had to do was sit down with their, uh, their own comprehensive system plans and sift through to identify if they have capacity to absorb Mill Creek's growth, which they do. Um, generally speaking, they have, they have capacity to, uh, absorb the growth through twenty forty-four that Mill Creek expects. Um, specific conversations about the Mill Creek Boulevard sub area and the infrastructure improvements that are expected to be needed, um, have yet to happen. But, um, I might have to refer to city staff on that. I believe, um, after comp plan update, um, next year, there'll be, more tailored conversations with the service providers about the Mill Creek Boulevard sub area.
And may I have a question on that section? Cause I think that's one I sent a comment on. Um, so you know, you said that you, they, they, those providers have some plans that they develop on their own. Are those something that get published to the public that you would reference towards? Right? Cause like I said, I think my part of my commentary is our, our document just says, the provider says we need capacity. And not being able to at least reference where that analysis that says that
Mm-hmm.
that we, yes, we, we can absorb that capacity, I think would be helpful just to know that. There's some number crunching that happened in the background to, to make that statement. And like I said, it doesn't have to be that our complan has it, but if there's something that they publish. Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
We can say that they said.
Um, there's, and their system plans are from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. So those are the most recent documents that we're working with. And they plan through, they plan on a slightly different horizon, but they're through like twenty forty-five and twenty sixty. So we'll, um, we'll add those as references in the, in the utilities element. Yeah. Um, moving on, and one thing I didn't do was pull out who commented. I have some comments here. I didn't pull out who. So, um, let's just, let's just see how that goes. Um, one question in the, uh, the capital facilities element, um, was on the level of service guidelines for city facilities. So, um, city hall north and south. And someone was asking, um, about if the, if the city hall north and south buildings are leased or owned. And, um, I guess I just, uh, want to know like why this question was asked and what the why is behind it. Um.
Well, I think I asked that question. It brings a slight bill anyway.
Thank you.
And maybe somebody else did too or instead of me. But, um, if you own the buildings, they're yours forever. If you're leasing the buildings, they aren't yours forever. From a standpoint of like building a new city hall, if they're leased facilities versus your own building, you can tear down. It makes, it makes a difference. That's why I asked the question.
They're owed.
They're owned.
We owe this property to one next door. And so that does give us some negotiating power and some uh, presence in the Mill Creek Boulevard sub area. I'll put it that way.
Okay, exactly. So the city owns these two parts.
We own these two parcels. Yeah.
Thank you.
Pretty clear, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I would also add, uh, we own the, um, the pond, the stormwater facility.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That was what I was getting at.
Okay.
So you can pave it over if you want to.
Remember you're being recorded.
I think they'd have to work with the, all the water management to even make that possible. And I don't think they want to.
Yeah, so we could pave it. Okay.
Continue.
Yes, um, one comment, um, suggestion to better define the inspection cycle of public stormwater infrastructure. Um, so we can work with city staff to have some more information added there. Um, anything else that's coming up on capital facilities before I move to and utilities, before I move to the parks element?
I would like to add that Commissioner Schulte, we just got, um, her comments.
Okay.
So those comments that we got, this, um, uh, prior to Wednesday, comment would not reflect in, in the presentation that, um, Sammy has given, but they will in the future. We're tallying them as they come in.
Yeah, my question is just as there was in this capital facility and more so in the utility, it was all to be updated. When are we actually going to get the data that's updated? That's going to be in the actual document that we're supposed to, uh, be approving?
And yeah, that's what I mentioned.
Cause like in through, was it four weeks? We're supposed to approve and send off this complete document?
Yeah, yeah. Um, that was done today. So that's what I mentioned about the utilities, uh, element being complete. It now is complete.
Okay, so the online version, at what time did it, was it posted today?
It has not been posted.
Okay, it hasn't been posted. Okay.
That leads to a question that I was trying to get. When will we see these things posted?
So fundamentally, what, if you look at the twenty fifteen plan, it had a lot of detail on very specific things about the facility. We made a decision to do much like other cities are doing and say, we are served by P U D. And here's their long-term plans. They got enough capacity. And Sammy did a great job of going and getting those twenty twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one plans and con- confirming we have enough capacity for the growth. And then we'd reference these other plans. If you want to go hear more about how they've got this dam that provides this power and it goes through this transmission line, we didn't need all that kind of detail in our plan because it's just going to be out of date. So we took all that out. Sammy did a good job of taking that, kind of saying, here's the providers.
No, and, and I, I have no, I'm just trying to figure out from a timeline when we're going to see these things. Cause we kept being told we're going to see things. And then, yeah, we.
Yeah.
They don't show up.
They don't show up and we don't get notified. So it, it.
So to.
Our track record has not been good from us.
The schedule that Mandy, uh, provided a couple of weeks ago, the seventeenth, which is today, was the deadline to receive comment from commissioners. Because then that will give us time before the November seventh public hearing.
But, but when Mandy gave us that schedule.
Yeah.
The utility section wouldn't say two B D, T B D, T B D. So you've asked us to review something that's basically blank.
Blank, yeah.
And so I'm just asking, when will we receive a document that has something so we can review it? Cause it's not to the timeframe that OTAC. I don't want to get into a dispute about this.
No.
We're not meeting timeframes, yet we still hold to the timeframe. And that's, that's a commission concern.
We can get updated elements on the website, probably, uh, I mean, I don't want to promise anything, but I will work with Justin because.
And will these include the maps? Cause there's like a million and one maps and figures. And there's no maps or figures. It's hard for me to evaluate what I am reading without the map and figure being available to me.
Yeah.
So all that needs to be available for us to review and, and approve.
I, I mean, I'm fine. We don't have to make a recommendation to the council. We can say, here's a document council you want to look at this. But if we have to make a recommendation, we actually have to see the document with some amount of time to review that document. And the council doesn't need to have a recommendation from the planning commission. They can go forward without that, but we're getting to a serious stage here. As we meet with them Tuesday, this will be an item that comes up, whether it comes up organically or it's part of the agenda. And so I would think between now and Tuesday, you want to make sure these updated elements are available for us to at least have a chance to look at.
Okay, we'll get them posted.
I, I have a question. I, I'm just, we've been going through the same issue repeatedly over the last few weeks. And, um, my question is, what's the rush? Why, why can't we take our time?
We're ineligible for funding.
If there's a statutory requirement to have this comprehensive plan done by X date, that's one thing. The city of Seattle just published in the Seattle Times that they have a provisional comprehensive plan, which is going to be modified repeatedly over the few, next few months. That's going to go way beyond the first of the year. So what's the rush? You're talking about a multi-million person community where the comp plan by the mayor is saying it's going to be extended. Why aren't we saying we need to extend this? Or as Matt indicated, continue forward, but don't get a recommendation from the committee, from, but from us. Just do what you want to do, but we can't evaluate it on time. So what's the answer? Why the rush?
So the requirement is by the end of twenty twenty-four, we have to provide a comp plan. If the Seattle's got an exception or they're going to break the rules, that's their thing. I don't happen to know about Seattle. But the objective is what have been at P S R C on the executive policy board when it comes to them and they list off Black Diamond didn't get theirs done because of this. So and so didn't get that. I shouldn't say Black Diamond, but that's was the one a few years ago. And so you're not eligible for funding if you don't have your plan in compliance with the multi-county planning policies and the CPPs, the countywide planning policies at a certain point in time. So that's the requirement, both from the state to meet their deadline, which is the end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And also from a practical standpoint to be eligible for any of the federal funds that comes through P S R C, which are substantial. If we end up being a month or two late, you probably can beg for, for forgiveness, but our objective is really to try to get it done on time. So we're not the one that's being called out as being the one that's out of compliance.
So, so how many other jurisdictions are, are on time?
Uh, the mayor reported from S C T or from the P S R C Growth Management Policy Board, he reported a couple of weeks ago that fifty percent of the cities in the P U D town area have theirs in already to P S R C and fifty percent did not. We issued ours about three days after that, the, for, for their draft review. How many of those come back from review with things to work on is unknown, but fifty percent had submitted as of would have been the eighth of, um, eighth of this month when he responded, reported that.
Okay, so it, it is a hard date.
Well, I, I don't know necessarily if it's a hard date or not. I think that, uh, if, but the financial consequence occurs when there is going to be immediate uh, financial impact associated with this plan. As I understand it, this is a, a minimum three to five years because you're talking about code amendments. And you're also talking about financial impacts up to twenty forty.
Yeah.
So what's.
Mike, maybe you need, maybe you could repeat for the council, for the, uh, commissioner, the implications of not having this delivered. Cause it doesn't sound like he heard you.
Yeah.
I heard him.
Okay, so it's a state law. And so the governor could say, you're not going to get any state money for anything, which include like liquor tax or road tax or those kinds of monies. That it doesn't typically happen very quickly, but we also need to, if you're not in compliance, P S R C says you guys, Mill Creek or Black Diamond, you're out of the competition for federal funds until you get in compliance. And that, I use Black Diamond as example because they were one that was, had a really tough time a couple of years ago. What happened in Pierce County was Pierce County reported, here's the countywide numbers and the cities didn't add up to what Pierce County did. Because some cities had taken more than their growth target and some had taken less. And so it didn't comply. It was a big whoop, brouhaha last cycle in twenty fifteen. We don't want to be in a position where Mill Creek is the one that it doesn't have numbers that match up. The plan you've put together is the number that we're assigned. So it's going to match up. But we don't want to be the plan that is missing when they look at the portfolio of Stonefish County and all the cities. Are you ready to go? Cause we'll have to take ourselves out of regional competitions for funding.
So, I mean, now that we've talked about the importance of the schedule, I would just reemphasize that. Have you reemphasized that with our consultants? Because we have not had a good track record would be the kindly way to put that today. And I would ask that you come back with some kind of information tomorrow to the commission about when these updated documents will be available to us.
We can get a new set of elements posted for you guys and send that tomorrow.
Thank you.
And yes, there's, there's a little bit of delay between the work that we're doing and relaying it to the planning commission. There's some coordination that, you know, has been, um, a bit delayed. So.
I, I'm very accepting of that, but it would be good if we didn't come to a meeting and we find out we're delayed again. Or we get documents that are a skeleton without explanation. That, that becomes frustrating because this is one of the best planning commissions I've sat on in my decade plus. And people are really reviewing it and we're not going to rubber stamp it. And I'm fine to go forward with no recommendation to the city council if that document is not available to us to fully review and recommend that. And I'm happy to talk to the electeds about that. So I leave it in OTAC's hands to look at the schedule and figure out how you can both provide to the schedule you say you're going to make and tell us when you're not making it.
Okay, moving on to the parks element, a couple, um, main changes. Um, what we've done is remove the level of service standards and guidelines for the municipal urban growth area, the MOOGA. Um, that was something that was in the twenty fifteen plan that, um, just shouldn't be. The city's not responsible for those numbers. So that's been removed. Um, one thing we do talk about that goes, uh, through the MOOGA is the, the regional park system and the, the list of regional parks that are outside the city limits. Um, there is a suggestion to include Willis Tucker Park. Um, so there we'll leave information that relates to the MOOGA, but not have level of service standards and guidelines. Um, there was a comment to, um, mention the private recreation facility west of Bothell River Highway and north of Dumars Road. I'm not sure which, uh, was that, um, was that your comment?
Yeah, it was mine. Yeah. It's the great big, I can't remember the name of it. I was involved with the design review board, but it's a huge recreation facility and it's not owned by the city, but it is certainly used by a lot of city residents.
Talking about Arena Sports?
What?
Arena Sports. Arena Sports? Are you talking about the one just north of Shell Station?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Arena Sports is what he's.
Arena, Arena Sports is the name of it. Yeah.
And that's an indoor recreation facility?
Yes. Yeah, it's got soccer fields. I mean, it's huge and it just seems like it's, it should somehow be listed as not our in, I don't know. Mike, should it be in there or not?
I think we've had this as debate every time we've talked about it. Do you list? You know, we, we, back, we, I'll tell you, we're back to talk about level, level of service standards. We need fifteen tennis courts and the city only owns two. Is that a problem? Well, the trick is there's a whole bunch of the schools, but they're not owned by the city.
Okay.
So I think that's why we've gone away from those specific level of service standards. But you raised a good point. We might say there's also maybe generally make a statement, there's other private facilities that provide recreation. Because now we have an indoor swim pool, training center, and we have a gymnastics and we have the soccer fields. Maybe a generic statement that says there's, the community is blessed with having private facilities that also provide.
Cause it, it provides stuff for our citizen, our residents.
Yeah, so the city doesn't have to provide.
The city doesn't have to provide it.
Yeah.
So follow up on that. You mentioned the tennis courts and the school has them. Uh, how do, how do we account for things like them putting a portable on top of that tennis court and thus it being taken out of commission? And I mean, that's in fact publicly owned and, you know, voted or whatever. But, uh, if we're putting the level of service on some other entity than the city, is that, and then I guess, uh, what's the responsibility then for them to continue providing that level of service? Or does that mean that now that there's a portable on one of those tennis courts that the city now needs to build a new tennis court in the city in order to maintain the similar, same level of sort of service in the city bounds?
I would say that's probably the reasoning that Tom Rogers and, and those in the past would say, let's not put in the private facilities against the level of service because of that uncertainty. And so what we've done this plan is to say, let's just take those level of service, that leak level of detail out. So we're talking about a pros plan as a, as the place where you'd have that level of detail. But talk at the higher level about the goals and policies for recreational facilities to, uh, support our community. And so I think the, I think in the pros, in the park recreation open space element, you'll see that we've taken those levels out of how many tennis courts per thousand or how many swimming pools per thousand, recognizing that that's kind of a hard target to chase.
And I then also ask about like, well, what about dual use? Say if you had X number of tennis courts, but you also said X number of pickleball courts and you say, but look, you can kind of use them the same. I know I don't want to get into that whole argument. But how do you count, how does that account into that? I can see where you're saying like, it might, even if we did provide it, are we providing it at full? And well, how much of the city are we going to have to make into tennis courts? Just to guarantee that we have enough tennis courts. So. That's amazing.
Other comments, questions about the parks? Other comments, questions about the parks?
Okay, that covers it for parks. Um, transportation, I have a couple high level things again on Tuesday. We'll have transport group here for some more in-depth conversation. There was a comment to add simply add descriptions, definitions of this different street classifications. Um, arterials, collectors, local roads, so we'll, we'll do that. There were a number of comments, um, I believe by Commissioner Schulte on table two, the level of service standards. Um, these comments will be uh individually addressed, as will all comments. Every comment you guys have provided will be uh responded to, um, and you'll receive those. You have access to those documents now, but we're still working through and responding to all of the comments. Let's see. Uh, another thing that the transportation group is going to talk about is the roadway classification changes. For 153rd Old Seattle Hill Road and 148. I know you guys talked about that a couple of weeks ago. Um, so they'll come, come with information on that. There was a question regarding the most recent pavement rating, uh, citywide pavement rating, um, the original. The 2015 document just mentioned 2012 and 2015. Um, they've since been done in 2020 and 2024. Um, and then the last comment here I have, um, there was a comment made about. We're talking about regional transportation systems and the light rail stations. The future. Linwood Station, I don't think is completely solid, um, but I believe it'll be at the Ashway location. And then there was also a comment um to mention the 128th Light Rail Station. And I wanted to confirm, I I'm not sure if there's a light rail station proposed at 128th and I wanted. There is. So is that at the McCollum Park parking ride?
It's gonna be on the other side of five, I thought.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be the other side by five.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's still open.
It's open. It's open, but tentatively more.
They're leaning that direction, but they haven't bought the property or anything.
Correct, yeah, they're currently leaning towards the east side by five for the Ashway state stop. And the west side of I five for the Mariner stop. Oh, yeah, it it could change between now and then.
Worth mentioning, so, so thank you. That's all I have for comments. Again, we'll address all your comments in writing. And so if you guys are comfortable, we can move on to look at the the graphic layout of the plan.
I just got a question. Were we supposed to have two folders that show up in there where we had the clean and then a comments? Because when I go into the document section, there was just the one folder set.
So on the website, um, at the bottom of it, I could show you online. There is the ones with the comments and then at the top is the clean, clean ones.
Okay, I did. I don't think I saw that then. On the SharePoint site, you're talking, right?
Sorry, the website does not have commented versions.
The website just has PDFs, right?
Yeah.
Clean PDFs, pretty much.
We did not have a commented section or or uh changes, uh, which is what OTAC had promised last time we met.
I think there were changes.
Was the track changes?
Yeah.
There were, and then where was it? There were.
Want to look at it because it's such a disaster.
What hap- what had happened was at city council. We got a comment to remove those and just make it PDFs. So there was quite a back and forth conversation in terms of what to do. Um, to have a PDF, um, documents online and still have the track changes. So if you had gone in there earlier, you would have seen the um Microsoft Word with. Track changes and then uh after that we moved and put the PDFs online.
But when you sent out the thing that said we were gonna see two uh to access the word documents online, there was showing that there should have been two folders there. One was a clean and one was a comments version. When I went in, there was only one folder.
I think the documents were in the same folder. There was a. Markup copy and a non-markup copy.
Not in my, when I downloaded it.
Are you looking for the track change versions?
Yes.
Okay, so we can.
Where you're responding individually to all of our comments. Where do I find that?
Those are on the SharePoint. You should have.
I don't see that in the SharePoint and I just looked at it today.
Well, perhaps we can just take that as an action for take that just, um, you know, ask you make your updates to the next version of the document if you can. See, maybe there's a simple, something as simple as a permission issue that needs to just be corrected for the track changes and for us to get access. Um, just let us know once you do any kind of check and then we'll, we'll quickly let you know if we found that, see that access or not.
No, thank you.
Um, so it sounds like tomorrow we will send you an email letting you know that. Elements are updated in the SharePoint. And in a folder in the SharePoint, there's. Versions with comments. Not all have been responded to, but you'll be able to see what has been. So look for our email tomorrow. Okay, I'm going to share the screen. So we can look at what this plan might look like. Okay, so. Again, um, a draft. And what we've done so far, we've started to pull information in chronological order. So we started with the introduction and the community profile. So. These are somewhat unique to the other elements, the main set of elements that'll have the goals and policies and the background report. Um, but this gives you an idea of how different it's going to look from the 2015 plan. Um, the 2015 plan was um. Pretty much all text and this is a lot uh more graphic forward. Photos, colors, varying sizes of text to uh add visual interest and make it easier. If someone wanted to learn about their city of Mill Creek, they could come in um. And have some, some nice graphics to look at and some high level data points to look at. This is an eleven or an eight and a half by eleven, just a normal sheet of paper. Um, we have it shown in a layout view right now, so it's. Even though it it looks like a landscape page, it's a normal, a normal packet.
Is that two pages?
Yes.
Side by side.
Yes, so.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. So we're working as we start to finalize some of these elements, we're working to get um. The bulk of the elements in this format. Okay.
On these figures, can you make sure that they're all readable? Because like some of them, the grays are lost in the whiteness of the page.
Yeah. Yep. Here's the introduction. So this is more of a text-heavy uh representation of the plan. So hopefully that gives you guys a little bit of hope. It's coming along and um, like I said, you'll see an email from probably Justin or Sibley tomorrow. With the most recent uh elements. And I think that pretty much covers it. Um. I'm going a little out of order from the agenda, but if we wanted to. Open it up for ideas, um, for agenda items for the Tuesday meeting. We can do that. I can, I can tell you what we have planned so far. So like I've mentioned, we're gonna talk about transportation. We're gonna have a conversation um about housing capacity uh and. In the Mill Creek Boulevard subarea, so. Expect that. Um, we have two conversations um going kind of with city council. Uh, right now specifically about the subarea priorities for the Mill Creek Boulevard subarea. So they met, the city council met on the eighth and they had some comments about the key priorities. Um, so we just wanted to bring those back to you and and show you the changes. Um, and then there's a, there's a conversation um about. The the vision statement and the comprehensive plan and how that relates to the vision statement of the. Strategic strategic plan. So what you guys were talking about um at the beginning of this meeting. Um, and then also on the eighth, uh, Justin will be sharing the development regulation um. Updates as well. So if there's anything else that you would like to discuss with the city council?
I I think we need to review the detailed schedule. With the city council.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you say that.
It's on the agenda, but thank you for the reminder, yes. Yeah. And if there's anything that comes to mind, um, I believe you could probably just email um Justin or Sibley. We could have it added.
And what time is that meeting on the next Tuesday?
Um, so the clerk usually puts the agenda all together. So we don't have a clear sense, but in the past we've, you know, it has been around seven PM. We don't know if that's when it will start because city council has its uh. Calendars set differently from planning commission.
Okay, does the council meeting start at six?
It it starts at six.
Okay, because the last time I came at six and sat through that part of.
Right, and also they're going through budget. Or, yes, so that may prolong the conversation and that may delay when the uh this agenda item may start.
But the agreement we had is kind of variable because the budget and some other things that may happen ahead of time, but the agreement we have with with the clerk and the council. Uh, is that we won't start this before seven. So if you want to wait till seven to grab some dinner first. And get down here at seven o'clock, it won't happen before that, even if we have to get them to scramble their schedule and do vouchers first or something. So if you'd like to not come down before, that's fine. If you want to come down here above budget. That's fascinating stuff, too. Right?
Thank you.
Yeah, I should tell you format wise, remember what the joy we had before we was old tables, but the intention is to have all of you and all of the council be fourteen chairs around this. A table here, so we're all at the same level, intermixed as an opportunity. You will, they will have opened their meeting at six. Uh, Commissioner, your Commissioner Chair, Mr. Nolan, will open your meeting when you get here. Come to that table at seven and probably close it again because you'll have a meeting inside the meeting will be yours. But the intent is really have a discussion. There's gonna be some presentation that has to be, but hopefully engender some, some discussion on the tough items that. You think you want to bring forward and get their, their guidance on as you wrap up your recommendations.
I think that covers it for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sam.
Are we ready to move to the new topic? So summary of comprehensive plan municipal code amendment.
All right, everyone. So thank you for allowing me to add this to the agenda. OTAC has prepared a number of code amendments to keep in compliance with. Uh, state legislation that's happened since the last comp plan. And I have also prepared um number of amendments and. Over the past week, I've been synthesizing those and harmonizing them to make sure they work with each other and I prepared a. Table which I handed out, which has a summary of the topics we have focused on and then references to where they are. In the code and the rationale and any notes. Um, you haven't seen it before now because it was just finished today. Um, I will be emailing it to you after this meeting, uh, along with, along with posting all of the. The code amendments. So. I want to go through the the major ones and a number of the minutes are uncontroversial. I mean, there's. There's grammar mistakes or spelling changes, um, but some of them are major and I want to cover those. So the first topic we have is that the city must accommodate its uh housing targets. We've been over this before, um, so uh changes. To accommodate housing targets uh are in the planned community business. Zone, which is where, uh, which is what Town Center is zoned at. So we have. We're basically taking that town center zoning as we talked about extending itself to the whole subarea. And the only change to the town center zoning uh was two changes. One. We are removing the um, the maximum housing density. And two, we are renaming the zone from planned community business to Town Center. Small caveat, if you don't like the name Town Center for that zone, it's not set in stone. I'm taking suggestions. We could also call it like a city center zone or an urban core. Um, there's a lot of options, but Town Center is. You know, what it's known as, so we're going with that unless there's any objections from council planning commission. Uh, next item, um, as I mentioned a few meetings back, uh, we're combining the LDR and PRD seventy-two hundred zones. Um, and the reason that for that is because they both fulfill essentially the same function and have very similar regulations. So to um. To reflect that in code, I have deleted the LDR zone and then harmonized any differences between the two. And then I renamed the PRD seventy-two hundred zone to neighborhood residential, just to show that it's. You know, it's, it's meant for, you know, neighborhoods, it's residential primarily, primarily residential zone. Uh, however, there were a couple. Differences from the zones that I would like to get your feedback on. You don't have to give me an answer today, but I want to present it to you. One moment. Right, this, can you all see this on the screen?
We can read it, we can see it.
There we go. Okay, um, uh, PRD. Oh, my goodness. Oh, sorry. So there's a different keyboard on my laptop. I hit the wrong button. All right, so the major differences have to do with setbacks. I'm just gonna scroll down. Anything built with the grandfathered in. Um, but the main difference that I saw was that. The PRD zone. Has rear setbacks of five feet.
Could you make it a little larger, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna, you know.
Thank you. Great.
Is that?
Yeah, can you get it on my screen here now?
So the PRD zone has rear setbacks of five feet and the LDR zone has rear setbacks of twenty feet. That's a pretty big difference. It's the only, one of the only major differences. And. I was considering harmonizing it at fifteen feet, which would match the front setbacks of the PRD zone. You know, we have, I'm not quite, it's, it's a little unusual that PRD zone had five foot rear setbacks. That's pretty unusual. For residential zones, especially low density zones.
Especially with the fire code and things like that.
Yeah, uh, for safety, we generally only need five feet. Uh, the building, I conferred the building official. He says I need five feet to. For egress and for maintenance of structures near property lines. But that does mean that if it's so short, you could conceivably have, you know, a two or three story house looming over your backyard, which is probably undesirable. So I'm leaning more towards a lot of increasing the setback um to fifteen or twenty feet. Um, so if you have a preference on that, if you read through, let me know.
Do we know if there's properties that were built with five feet or, you know? The, the code says it's a minimum, but was there any actual properties in that area that were built with that five feet standard?
I'm not aware of any. I have never seen one that's that close to the rear property line. It's very unusual. I'm not aware of any. I have never seen one that's that close to the rear property line. It's very unusual.
I, yeah, I, I would say accessory uh dwelling, uh not dwelling structures that we've either approved um are at five feet because of that provision in the code. But not the, not the principal structure itself, we haven't really come across. A principal structure close to.
Would this affect ADUs if they were to come into existence?
Maybe, so currently you are allowed to build an accessory building, whether it's a shed or an A D U up to five feet or within uh up to five feet from the property line if it is a certain height. So I believe it's look, is it one story and a certain uh square footage, maybe up to five feet. If you exceed that height and size, it has to be pulled back to the normal rear setback. So if you had, imagine if you had like a garden shed, you could have that five feet in the property line, no matter what the size, the rear setback is in any zone. If you had then expanded it, so it was, you know, two stories tall, then you have to pull it back to meet the setbacks that apply to the main structure.
It is to let sun come through. So think of it like high rises. The higher the high rise, the more offset it is from the road just to allow sunset down to the lower level. So it's the same concept.
And the ground, structures existing are grandfathered?
Yes. Justin, please share your screen. It is not.
We see it.
Uh she may mean to uh
To the zoom.
I am on the second participant on Zoom, so I, just to monitor.
Yeah, what we see here is what he's seeing on that screen. That's not necessarily. So, so we don't believe that there's any existing properties within Mill Creek that bump up against that five foot setback except for sheds and other smaller buildings.
Correct. So if we, if we have a larger rear setback, say twenty feet like in the L D R zone, um it wouldn't affect any currently built structures and it wouldn't affect any small accessory buildings such as sheds. I I don't remember the exact square footage off the top of my head of how.
Cause my shop garage is a thousand square feet and I can guarantee you it's within five feet of the property line.
Sorry, say again.
I have a, I have a shop garage on, on my property that's uh not attached to the rest of the property and it's, I can guarantee it's within five feet of the property line. It's a thousand square feet.
Yeah, I mean, that would not be allowed under the current on, under, under any of the current zones. So I mean, if it's, if it's grandfathered in, if it's, it's already permitted and built.
Number something like four or six hundred feet, isn't it, square feet?
It's in that range, four to six hundred. I think, I think, I believe it's four hundred square feet and twelve feet in height, but I would want to double check that cuz I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I, I have a shed that's about a hundred square feet and about twelve feet at the top of the peak of the roof. That is about five feet from my property line, so I wouldn't be surprised.
Also a double story structure in my neighborhood that wouldn't qualify as well. They were originally built in like the eighties when during the M C C thing before the city existed.
So they've been grandfathered in more than once.
Yeah, it could've been built during the county before it was annexed.
The problem would come on if you wanna rebuild your falling down fences.
You can, so um for buildings that are nonconform, legal nonconforming, so they were permitted, when they're built, they're probably permitted. You're allowed to keep using them indefinitely and if they, if there is um if it burns down, you can rebuild it in the same footprint. You can also, you can always rebuild it in the same footprint. So you just can't expand it and increase how nonconforming it is.
My suggestion to you would be, I know the commission spent a long time looking at A D Us and came up with a really reasonable approach to it. Um but there is a lot of consternation in the neighborhood about setbacks and those and them building something. So sticking to your current L D R at twenty feet for the time being would probably be a, a a prudent move for the city so that we have a more conservative number and people don't come back and say, oh my God, what have you done to us?
Yeah, I, no, I, I totally agree. Um I, that, that five feet rear is very unusual and I would recommend a, a larger one.
I, I can't think of anything that's developed in the under the P D R seventy-two hundred with a five foot setback, so it's, I mean if a developer comes in, then we could look at, you know, code amendments and all that kinda thing, or see where we're at. But I think with so much change going on and that already, the A D U piece being and that coming up even here. Sent the city into a tizzy there for a bit. When it's not even allowed for the M C C A or anything else and we do have a lot for our community to worry, to, to focus on as we move forward with this, with the whole town center zoning, as you call it.
Yeah, yeah, so in that case, I will, you know, essentially change this five to a twenty and so it will meet the L D R rather than P R D standards, so the more restrictive of those. Anyone does not like that, feel free to send us comments and we can discuss again. Uh other than that, that, those are the.
My only suggestion was going to be that it's the same feet as some of the other zones. We don't have a random fifteen feet picked out of the sky. If we've got twenty feet as part of the other code, keep it at twenty feet.
Yeah, yeah, and twenty feet was the, another one, so.
One rock, we don't have to turn over.
Exactly. I think that's important at this time.
And so it's the existing L D R that would be changing from five to twenty?
So we're.
But L D R is going away and just being absorbed into this, okay? And of course, all those that had previously been approved are, are grandfathered in.
Basically, the L D R and the, the P D R seventy-two hundred are being melded together called neighborhood residential under the existing L D R rules. I think from a community standpoint, we can look at this when there's more time, if there's a more elegant way to do it, but at least it moves forward without causing some consternation in the community.
And I chose the P R D as the template for the new zone because that was sort of the core of the original Mill Creek as it was developed. So I thought it'd be the most, made the most sense.
So you're removing L D R zone, are we? Oh, okay, good. I was just gonna ask, what's it written, what's it named? Okay, neighborhood residential. Alright, so there is no P R D seventy-two hundred and no L D R anymore. It's neighborhood residential.
Right, and it will be fulfilling the comp plan land use designation for the low density residential designation. Alright, uh next up, I removed the office park zone entirely because there are only three parcels zoned office park and the city owns all three and they're being redeveloped into the D R C C. So there will no longer be a use for the zone, so since there will no longer be any parcels zoned that, so it's it became nonessential or not needed.
Can O TAC take note cuz then the thing needs to be updated in the whatever section that is.
Yeah, there's, we'll update the comp plan land use designation as well to remove it and so it'll become either a like a, a public facility or an open space. Probably an open space cuz that's what our, all our parks are designated as now. But it kinda depends on what the council wants to do with that, those properties, whether they want to have more park based use or community facilities. That's another conversation that we're waiting to hear the.
So the two lone city buildings we have here aren't zoned office park.
Correct, this is the um.
Yeah, I wanna know trivia wise, of the four properties, the D R, C and C, which one is not an office park? D R, C or C?
Let me pull up a, a map for you.
Is it C and C that are not?
The Dobson Rev Lord and the existing Mill Creek Sports Park are still office park. That whole triangle was office park once upon a day. And then that triangle got converted to community business. He's got the picture there now.
So Cook and, and Church were community business.
It's not that simple, but.
And the D R C C, yeah, there's one community business, two office parks and then one high density uh high density mixed use residential. City Hall now is in the business park zone. Um so yeah, there's only, only these three parcels here, which one of them's already a park, the other two will be soon.
Do we have any reason to believe that the D R C C properties and sports park might be combined into one parcel or that they would remain as five separate parcels?
Um, that's a great question that I've been pondering in my mind. Um, we haven't really talked about it as staff. It's likely that be combined. It, it really depends. If you look at like the Martha, Martha Lake Park, it's multiple parcels or the Martha Lake, I've heard the name, the one that's down one sixty-fourth with the lake. Yeah, it's still several parcels. Um you can combine them all, it's extra step. It can make it simpler. It was, we'll see.
I, it's, I mi- might be a moot point really as to how you handle it. Um additionally, uh so let's say you do label it all as open space because that's what the parks currently are and that may be what that is one potential use, maybe you just lump it in with that for now. It's possible that we rezone that in the future, correct? Those five properties to whatever the specific uses that the city decides to do with this D R C C plus sports park.
Correct, and if there, the city council ever had a major change of opinion, what they wanna do with those, we would just in our annual comp plan update, we would just change the map to whatever use they prefer for that, those parcels.
We're the only property owner that gets to change our zoning by ourselves.
And you, and you, we, we uh, as part of that amendment process, actually we go to you first, you could recommend, you know, to do it or not to do it.
Do you all have any thoughts on whether they should go to open space or try to define what they want first?
I'd just define what they want first, just because it could be across parcels with different uses. Depending on what their master plan is.
Yeah, I would, right now I wouldn't say that it's all open space, so I don't know that that's the correct classification for it by what it is, but I don't know.
So right now, here's the land use designations, Mill Creek Sports Park, which is, you know, adjacent, is designated as open space. We, so I'm, I'm intending to do the same for these parcels, on the D R C C parcels. And so if the council wanted to do a big change of direction, we would just change that in the next update. Cuz the update would happen before anything broke around on This is a land use map. Uh if the zoning one, it's Yeah, it's, here's the zoning map. Okay, um moving on, um so here's probably the most controversial changes that we have made and they are being made as a result of state uh legislation. So the first one was a result of House Bill twelve twenty and that stated that cities must allow permanent supportive housing and transitional housing in zones where residences or hotels are allowed. So um we went through and we added definitions for those two uses and then we added them to all the zones where housing or hotels are allowed. So I mean, there's not, there isn't really a way to not do this. It's a state requirement of House Bill twelve twenty. There is some little room, you're allowed to have limited number of restrictions on we are allowed to have a limited number of restrictions on spacing, occupancy and intensity. But the Department of Commerce um guidance on the topic recommends you do not do that, but we are able to if we, if we want to. We, I haven't prepared any specific proposals for any of those. I guess it'd be good to actually look at the definitions for these uses, just so I know what we're talking about.
Is, is this one of those that it doesn't apply to H O As or is that another bill?
I believe it does not apply, there's no provision that overrides H O A covenants, so if your H O A does not allow them. Emily, are you aware of any? Is that accurate? Yeah, so your H O A, if it does not allow these uses, they won't, it can be built. So your H O A can have those restrictions. Um and then for the actual definitions, let me pull those up. Alright, so there we go. Permanent supportive housing is centered. So permanent supportive housing is subsidized leased housing with no limit on stay, on length of stay that pretizes or I can't read it with these. For people who need comprehensive support services to retain tenancy and utilizes admissions practices designed to lower barriers of entry. Maybe I'll read the whole thing. I'll let you read it to yourselves. Um it's a mouthful. Basically, it's for people who are at risk, uh one of the main things, people who are at risk of experiencing homelessness, it can uh be put in these um supportive housing. Or if you have a, a physical health condition and you need support services to help you you know you need support services in your, your residence.
Justin, just a general question. I know I recall that in the compl- uh comp plan, there's targets for, for these. What is the ratio of like space to I guess capacity when it comes to that type of housing? I mean, like if I think about it, a two thousand square foot home, what is that? What do you gain, like what's how many, I guess what credit do you get for, for size? I'm just kinda curious.
Yeah, so there is, um the city does have to prepare a uh a house uh capacity analysis for some of these new housing types, but not for the permanent supportive housing or the transitional housing, just for the emergency um shelters and emergency housing. We learned about that pretty recently and so uh one of the, our consultants, Leland, is preparing a land capacity analysis for the emergency shelters and housing and they'll be looking at whether we meet that, our target. We are I don't, I don't think we'll have any issues hitting our target. But they, we don't have to show what capacity for these two that I'm talking about at the moment.
So you, you mentioned that the permitted supportive housing is required by the House Bill twelve twenty. But that has limited restrictions for spacing occupancy and intensity that we can add in our other jurisdictions around us who are adding in for twelve twenty. Do you have what Edmonds has done, what Montlake Terrace has done, what Breyer's done, what Snohomish has done that we may want to at least provide to us to, to consider as part of this.
Yeah, we're reaching out. Um most of it's not publicly available because it hasn't been passed yet, that they're still deliberating. Um so you, you have to kinda go.
But Mike told us fifty percent of the people have already submitted their comp plans.
Yeah.
Um to Department of Commerce, they didn't submit them to us. Um I mean, you can scrape their websites and find some of it. I actually have a um, the Department of Commerce provides a really good handout for implementing twelve twenty and I can include that um uh with this if you like to look through. Um they talk about considerations for, they're, they're called, it's called step housing for supportive transitional, uh transitional, any emergency. Yeah, okay. I, I messed up. It's called step housing, includes all four of these uses we'll talk about.
So I have one question. Where on your map do you anticipate these permanent supportive housing and transitional housing?
It could be right next door to you.
Well, as long as you're not in the M C C A, right, or whoever has regulation.
M C C A doesn't currently have restrictions on this.
I'm just curious, where, where do you plan on?
Yeah, I don't think they do.
Well, it's gonna be in all the residential zones, so um or zones that look hotels, so that's gonna need to be.
All, all the yellow areas.
Pretty much everywhere except for this. Pretty much everywhere except for this light gray zone here and here.
So within the yellow area, you're talking about this pots will be having.
Yes.
Isn't that mainly HOAs?
Isn't that HOA?
There's not currently.
We don't, we don't have any control over the HOA rules, so um.
Your individual covenants of an HOA has to have that language in it. I've read MCCA and I don't think like it has language to this effect.
But I believe MCCA does have.
We have stuff on ADUs and who can live with stuff, which is your next box down. Um, but I don't believe it has any restrictions on this type of transitional housing or stuff like that.
Yeah, I looked at it one time a while back. I don't remember the details. They I've seen remember that it's having a limitation. It has to be a single family home. I don't know if they have to find that to exclude, you know, who can live in that home or. If this is included, I I don't know for sure, but your yeah, HOAs can eliminate that has that's an internal process of HOA. The city doesn't have any. Control over that.
But I thought I heard the HOAs can't go modify their covenants to not allow these stuff. It it had to be in there before.
Oh, just for ADUs.
Was for ADUs, okay.
Yeah, so this um, there is no restrictions on what um. Uh, HOAs can do unless it's specifically. Preempted by ci- the city or state law and so it uses only a few things that have been preempted.
I just, just to be clear, uh, the. An HOA could in fact change their covenant by a majority vote of their own people to exclude those. If it was not in place before like July thirtieth of this year or something like that. Then last year, then it doesn't matter. The state law takes precedence. For ADUs in this particular example of what we're talking about, but all the other things, it could still be added. This is saying that the city cannot. If you've marked anywhere as a residence or hotel, it must also allow permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. That the city cannot make it illegal to do that. If an HOA decides to add that to their covenants. And goes through their processes to change them appropriately and gets the majority of their ownership to agree to it. Then that can be in place and there is nothing that currently says that that can be overridden. Okay, I just wanted to be. There are ways to do that if that is a thing that you were concerned about in your neighborhood in in particular. Um, this is saying per state law that the city cannot restrict that in their zoning that they have for residential.
Spacing occupancy and intensity. So how far do we want to go?
There's that, yeah, then there's there are things that the Chamber of Commerce has or not Chamber. Department of Commerce has uh said, yes, it would be legal for you to do that, but we don't recommend you do.
They don't recommend it. They say if you do, you generally need to show that it has. That it the additional requirements are giving have legitimate health and safety benefits to the neighborhoods. So you need to show how the restrictions are promoting health and safety. Alright, uh, the next one is very similar. Um, the same House Bill twelve twenty. Uh, stipulate cities may not disallow indoor emergency housing and emergency shelters where hotels are allowed. So currently hotels are allowed in the planned community business zone, which is being re- being renamed town center. Um, in the community business zone. And the um EGUB zone.
Does the city currently have any hotels?
The city currently does not have any hotels.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. I I wanted to know, I know there is a hotel just outside of city count uh city boundaries near McCollum Park. But I think that's the closest one and there are no, in fact, hotels within the city.
Correct.
This is notable because of uh hotel residency taxes juicy. Um, and we don't get any of that because we don't have any hotels within the city.
So emergency shelters, indoor emergency shelters and housing, they are required in all the zones where hotels are allowed. So and they are subject to the same, um, are we, uh, the cities restrictions on them are such as the same. Spacing occupancy and intensity as the um. Uh transitional housing and supportive housing. So, um. If the city did not want to see these uses in the city, they would uh we would need to amend these zones to not allow hotels. So it's a bit of give and take. Um, hotels can bring in good revenue. Um, so it's uh. Those are options, yeah.
So this these buildings, City Hall North and South, then could be an emergency shelter housing, right?
They could be once we extend the town center zoning down.
So I have a question. Um, I don't know if you know the answer. Um, are these supportive housings and transitional housings tax exempt from property tax?
Uh, typically they're run by nonprofits and are taxed. I mean, I I don't, they don't have to be, but I can't think of any that would not be.
So I have a different question. Uh, what exactly would indoor emergency housing and emergency shelters look like? Uh, I don't. I'm the situation I'm imagining as what we might actually talk about is significant weather events or the big one hits. And the shakeout, which was today, right? Um, it comes to pass and we actually have to implement it and people are, I suppose, living in the. On Cots in the gym at the high school.
Oh, that's a great question.
That's that's what I'm envisioning when I think about such things as emergency ha- indoor emergency housing and emergency shelters. I just wanted to understand that, what that looks like for us.
Yeah, so I mean, there's there's a little difference between the emergency housing and emergency shelters. Um. As I'll read these off here, these are definitions we've we've added to the code. So emergency housing means temporary indoor accommodations for individuals or families who are homeless or at imminent risk of becoming homeless. That's intended to address the basic health, food, clothing, and personal hygiene needs of individuals or families. Emergency housing may or may not require occupants to enter a lease or an occupancy agreement. And then emergency shelter is related but slightly different. It's a facility provides temporary shelter for individuals or families who are currently homeless. Emergency shelter may not require occupants to enter into a lease occupancy agreement. And they may include day and warming centers that do not provide overnight accommodations.
I I would just point, I I know that in the city of Seattle, public buildings were used as emergency shelters. After hours. And so that's why I asked about, you know, this and I'm not saying that's good or bad. It's just an option. If the city wants to go there under this.
Okay.
This House Bill.
Um, one thing I have a question about, I've seen warming centers and I if I recall correctly. A lot in a lot of jurisdictions, and I don't know if that's true here or nearby, that like libraries are considered warming centers. Uh, has, does our library uh fall into that? Do we? Have we seen that? I don't know. I don't actually know.
Seen, uh, the Snow Isle, do they?
So Linwood Library was is a warming center. I think that's a decision by. Snow Isle and Linwood together, ours is not.
Okay. Do we?
And we we own the library buildings, so it'd be a joint decision, I'm assuming.
Yeah, they they lease it from us, right? Nice favorable lease or something like that. Um, but uh. So do we currently have anywhere which is zoned to allow indoor emergency housing or emergency shelter?
Not explicitly, no.
Okay.
It was never defined in our code.
Okay. Thank you.
Third question on that. I think you've got one more.
I I do have one more. I'm sorry. I I wanted to know, um, when this talks about emergency housing and things like that and it's specifically, it's talking about homeless. Um, if again, we're talking about the big one. Uh, and someone's house collapses or is otherwise found to be structurally unsafe, unsound, whatever the proper term is. And uh, they need shelter. Is that is that person then considered homeless while their? Listed home, their residence uh is in a is in a unsafe uh situation.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so, okay, so that is when that would apply. This is what I'm trying to think of what realistically, what could we be talking about here? Uh, for members in our community.
Yeah, as a practical matter, typically these uses aren't. Utilized in s- in cities, uh, small cities in Mill Creek that aren't the main regional center, but typically located in. Uh, the main urban centers like Everett or Bellevue or Seattle where there's all the services that um they need to be provided with. Um, there aren't a lot of all the services they would need are not in Mill Creek and so it's not ideal location for them.
Okay, but I do want to make sure we we do make a distinction though that we we don't make the assumption that it is only for. Uh, like a natural emergency, it can be purely for a homeless crisis. Crisis type of scenario that this exists, so just want to make sure we we don't think that it's just for. A natural disaster scenario.
Alright, um, next up was uh Senate Bill twenty-three thirty-five. Uh, um. Created a regulations that cities cannot limit the number of unrelated persons uh living in one dwelling unit. And so to comply with that one, we um. Uh, we updated the, we removed the definition of family since that had a. Specific limit on the number of other people who can be in the same family. So limited definition of family. And then we renamed some of the dwelling types. Um, and I'm gonna show you because they're all lumped in one spot. Yeah, so typically, uh, in our code, we had single family dwellings, we had multifamily dwellings. And we had some things like duplexes, townhouses and um. Um, I think all of them. I have reorganized these and renamed some of them. To be kind of consistent and in line with this uh this this uh uh. Uh legislation. So, single family uh dwelling is now defined as. That is redefined to be a single unit dwelling, but also up in or single family dwelling, so we don't have to eliminate all those um references. And I also updated the uh the definition, the. Update some of the definitions to reflect what those cities have done or what the building code has stipulated. So now we have. Essentially, you have your 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 starting, uh, your your basic level is a dwelling unit. And that is basically one single, is it on this page? Okay, a dwelling unit. It's one residential living unit that provides independent living facilities for one or more persons and has to include. Um, provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, sanitation. So complete, it's a complete dwelling unit. And then the way, so it's one unit. And then if a building only has one unit in it, a single family home, it's a single unit dwelling. If it has more than one unit, it's a multi-unit dwelling. And then um. Also defined, redefined, um. Accessory dwelling unit to match some of those changes and. Um, yeah, so all and I grouped them all together in the same place. So you should be able to see all the dwelling related things, the same place definitions. And then replace them all in the code um in all the different zones where they're referenced. So it's not really changing. Much besides terminology and also allowing um. Expanding definition of who is a family to be anyone who is living together. So for instance, if you have a bunch of, you know, let's say you had. By six college students living in the same. The same house in each and every rooms, they now are legally allowed to do so when before they were not.
Can I ask a question on the definition of the dwelling unit?
Yes.
With um the facilities there. Um, independent living facilities for one or more persons and includes provisions for the sleep. So could something be envisioned where you did have individual private rooms but shared common facilities? Like a shared kitchen, shared living room and space, would that still be consistent with this definition of dwelling unit? Or would that be not allowed?
That would not be allowed. Um, that's considered, it's it's. Uh, I believe the term we in our code is is congregate living. Um. Remember, uh, oh, that's only for. Yes, um, we have several different definitions that include those types of uses and they're allowed in some areas. Um, but in the the changes I've made, I haven't really changed. Much about, it's because terminology is changing.
Yeah, cuz cuz where I'm thinking of this, um, I've I haven't seen it in in Washington. But in California, they were building, especially in more town center areas, building things um more like. You had your own bedroom maybe, but there was more shared common facilities. Um, because it reduced the cost of things and. You know, that single people are living longer and they they wanted to live close to people, but they want still some of their own. And that you owned separately or owned or rented your separate. It room things, but there was also a lot more shared common space. You know, and so while it hasn't been seen here yet in Washington, that concept of builders. May come to here and just so we've thought through where that type of situation would be. Would would or we're not fit in.
Yeah, um, I mean, yeah, the those used to be actually very common. They're called single room occupancies and then they were. Mostly all outlawed over the course of the twentieth century in most cities.
Yeah, a lot of them were kind of more like um. Uh, short-term rental type things or travelers hotels type stuff. But you know, it was outlawed for a while and those kind of things were, but I s- I've saw it come back in California. As the pressure for more housing affordability came on. And you know, some people liked it, some people didn't like it, but I didn't want to necessarily close ourselves if. There became a market trend and um desire that we'd have a way to fit those things in the code if desired.
Yes, um, and that's something we could definitely look at um in the future. Um. Yeah, there I there is a growing movement to allow those uses in a lot of cities and and states. Um, we I didn't address it specifically here, but that's something we can look into if you like.
I think we don't want to inadvertently allow that without addressing it.
Yeah, we haven't inadvertently allowed it, yeah.
Yes, so.
It was, it was uh, it was kind of like uh peeling an onion, putting all these definitions together because every time you changed one, it changed all the rest of them. And I I I did a lot of deleting and copying and deleting and copying, so. Any more questions on this one, this topic?
I had one last one. If you could scroll down.
Yeah.
Uh, I just, uh, it's sorry, right there about the dwelling unit. Uh. I wanted to understand, do we specifically allow or disallow outhouses or septic tank usage? Within the city?
Um.
Within our residential zones?
We, that's a great question. In fact, Mike asked me that yesterday. And I had I had a chance to look that up for him.
Yeah, cuz one of the elements said there were still people on septic system, which was disturbing.
There 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 are, yes.
And do we have a plan to transition them away from that?
Yeah, it it's definitely a long term or it's a a goal and we have to work with um. Silver Lake and Alderwood are districts because they have to provide the the water um supply to those areas.
But I think the public health rules cover outhouses, not not septics. Legally compliant when it was built would be allowed, but I think. The public health is where actually most of that jurisdiction is as far as you can't go and have a go and put up.
An outhouse. I just, I just wanted to understand it within this, I see this. That it contains, it includes permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. And I went, well. What if is it on the property or is it within the main building?
You have to have um a complete restroom inside of the unit. You have to have a toilet and a shower or bath and a sink.
Okay.
And that's and those this the this part of this definition is pulled directly from the state building code. That it has to have current provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, sanitation. Some cities actually break it out and they'll be very specific, so they'll say provisions for sleeping. Semi-colon must include a stove or range and a uh refrigerator and a sink and a countertop. And bracket, I think on that level detail because most cities don't and it's still understood what that means, but I we could if we needed to. And bracket, I didn't go in that level detail because most cities don't and it's still understood what that means, but I we could if we needed to.
So um are we gonna then also do any updates in the comp plan for the use of the term, I mean like mi- in the middle, any of the middle housing studies? Family home, uh that that'd be my only concern of like confusion of like. We have this terminology, we might you be using in the comp plan for referencing all the studies that have been done and. Targets and then I was like, someone goes look at a code like, where is this, what's this? Um that that's my only concern, I say.
Yeah, um I don't think there'd be a lot of confusion between multi-unit dwelling and multi-family dwelling. Um I did leave single-family dwelling as an alternative uh name, so they they have same definition. So we don't have to change all the references, the comp plan and the code. We could go through and align all that terminology, um I don't think we have to, but we certainly can.
Other questions or we onto the back page now of your. Didn't realize our what.
It's back page.
You got all your questions asked on the first page though.
Okay, so the next topic is limitations on. Middle parking standards for low-income, senior, disabled and market rate housing located near high-quality transit. Um that's another state requirement uh that came about as a result of House Bill nineteen twenty-three and House Bill twenty-three forty-three. These amended same sections of uh state law and. Um so to comply with that, we have added a new section, the parking requirements that specify this the um. Number parking spaces required for these uses, so it's these, so it's the loan-comp housing, senior, disabled, the market rate. If it is within a certain distance from a frequent transit stop, which applies primarily along the. Butler Highway where there's the two swift lines, and it's a quarter mile.
So is the, did this increase the minimum or decrease the minimum? Okay.
But I would say, having dealt with this with developers, they are often going above the minimums for market rate because they find it.
Yeah, typically unless you're like in downtown Seattle, um. It's often hard to get financing if you don't in- include more than the required number of parking spaces because it just, they think sorry, they won't sell. Um so unless you're in an area where there's um there's a high demand for. Dwelling units with no lower limit of parking, it's not very common, but it's it's allowed under our code now.
Does this allow for multi-use function of the lots like to have to be specifically set aside? So if you're in a multi-function thing and you're you could use it for like the retail and the residence? Or does it specifically has to be excluded for these purposes?
It's only for the residential purposes, if you had mixed-use dwelling, there was part market rate and part retail. Um this new parking standard applied to the residential part but not to the retail part.
But I could I use some of that residential as my retail?
Uh hmm uh sort of, so our code allows some um. What's the word, we you can have a slight reduction in your minimum parking if you have a shared use. But between you two have to show that it's not overlapping on the hours, so if you had like a residential um. Like a resident or a retail store that's only open until five, five P M and then you have residential where people are mostly away at work. We may be able to allow those to be overl- so it's overlapping uses.
Yep.
Um but yeah, this this particular this this section doesn't alter any commercial or non-residential requirements.
But we could use some of those parking spaces as meeting commercial stuff if there wasn't the overlap issue.
Correct, so uh our current, our code um. Mixes parking requirements for developments on lots and or buildings with combined uses, the required number of parking spaces, should be some of the spaces for each use. Um and shall be reduced more than ten percent for each use, so it's not a huge reduction. Or we have also the the shared parking facilities, which um so we we do allow, it's it's possible, but. I mean, the these new parking standards for the that we added, they're pretty low, it's only. One space per bedroom or. Um point five spaces per unit, so it's they're not, there's not going to park leftover for retail to reutilize typically.
Just I I wanna understand, so must have one space per bedroom or zero point seven five spaces per dwelling unit. Per our definition of a dwelling unit, you have to have space for sleeping, so there has to be at least one bedroom.
Correct.
So.
I was also very confused about that in the state rules, um I know you're also confused about that. Yeah, so uh I'm probably gonna end up deleting the point seven five spaces and just leaving it's one space since that will always be the higher requirement. That I can figure out, I don't understand why the rule was written that way.
I think studios.
Uh well, yeah, I was gonna ask, okay, does a studio count as not a bedroom and thus they would try to say that they could use less?
That's why I think I remember all the discussion with the state legislature, I think that was it was studios is the way you got point seven five.
But I mean, it's certified for dwelling unit and a studio is one dwelling unit, it's not half a dwelling unit. I'm supposed to disconnect between the the talking and what actually got written.
Two studios would be one point seven, one point five versus a bedroom would be just be one and if it was two. Two bedrooms separately, you know, two one-bedroom units would be two.
But like a a studio, it's still one dwelling unit, so it'd be, oh, I see, uh. Oh, a studio being point seven five, but it has a.
Doesn't, cuz the bedroom is is the number of rooms it has, so if I have a two-bedroom unit, I would have to, I could do um. Two spaces, but if I have point seven five per dwelling unit, you know, that. Two-bedroom would be one point five, but if I had a studio, like two studios. Then I would be one point five and it, you know, if it's a multiplier, you get to a whole number, so a studio wouldn't be a bedroom. That's where it'll come into play, like if I have a apartment complex where I have a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. This point seven five will become important to them.
I mean.
If you don't classify a studio as a bedroom.
Um. Possibly, we don't define.
Facilities, but it doesn't have a, it doesn't necessarily have a bedroom. So that'd be how we defined it above, is it sleeping places versus an actual bedroom? Which, you know, they're different, when you get to studios.
Yeah, I mean, the the building code does have definitions for what qualifies the bedroom and what doesn't. I didn't delve that deeply into the building code to see, I would imagine a studio counts as a bedroom, but I could be wrong. Um Emily, do you know what other cities have done for this?
Sure, hit a microphone.
I reckon.
That one works, I think.
Oh, okay, um yeah, I think it, the so the R C W provides both of those numbers. And it kind of provides it as options, so like uh Commissioner was saying, if there are three-bedroom units within. A certain building, then the one space per bedroom starts to add up very, very quickly. So it's kind of left as an option, I have seen some cities that leave both in there. And say, one bedroom, one space per bedroom or one point seven or point seven five spaces. Per dwelling unit, whichever is fewer. And they have left it that way to allow for.
The legislation didn't specify to the greater. It just says this for this, and they choose to do one or the other.
I would get rid of whichever is greater. And then that gives flexibility like instead of the other.
I like parking, so I'd say.
I just love parking, so.
I.
Where this will be useful is is when we look at what we're gonna develop next is our town center south. Where you really want to get parking right. And if we have certain minimums and we think that is, you know, we wanna have control over that. So we can say we can still develop this and do parking that makes sense. Cuz where I've seen people that do dense town centers, the ones that actually work have got parking right. Where it's multi-shared spaces between your ru- your different times of use and activities for the area. And those that haven't done it right, and that's where we wanna just be sure, but we don't wanna, we can always quest more. We don't wanna be stuck to, we have too much parking, so then we're not able to have more functional space. That's why I just wanna be sh- clear what this means. Um as far as it used, cuz our concept is, you know, some people may not. Are supposed to be using alternative modes, that's why we put it on the bus rapid transit lines and stuff like that. And so then if you really, that's how it was being used, you'd be stuck with all these unused parking spaces and you'd be like, why do we have all these parking spaces? So if the if someone went through and probably based this on some studies. There's an intentional reason why you sometimes wanna do it more, less per dwelling unit, that we maintain that flexibility. Unless we find specific evidence where we're not seeing it being appropriate.
I agree, and there, I mean, the uh the current state of. In um planning is that, you know, the recommendations are that decreasing parking minimums are generally good. Uh uh I, it's it's a pretty common position, I. I I agree and I think we we have discussed changing our parking um minimums for the new sub-area. Um that is likely to happen and. I guess what I was trying to avoid was um parking comments are very contentious. And I didn't wanna have a big fight over parking now and also have it again when town center comes, I was hoping to just have it all at one go. Cuz.
But I would, if if the state doesn't require us to have whichever is greater, we just remove that and just.
Yeah.
Not distinguish between if it has to, we're going with the greater or the lower one, we just have that discretion left to us.
Yeah, we can do that and we actually do have discretion for our parking standards. Oftentimes, whenever there's a planned uh development that for the bonding site plan, we're actually able to modify our parking standards. Um as part of a development agreement with the developer, typically in return for something else.
But but now it says that somebody can have just point seven five of a space for the whole dwelling unit, right? So they could have a five-bedroom house and point seven five of a space, cuz it's a dwelling unit?
But it's only for low end, for low end or extremely low end.
And and honestly, my experience with that, when I I've dealt with this with housing is. Admittedly, we would love people and we build low-income housing on transit lines. That is often the asset that the low-income person has and they are very unwilling to get rid of that second car. And it's sitting there and they're hoping to fix it cuz they may need it to get to their job because transit doesn't go everywhere and those kind of things. And so I I I had this with King County, how does the authority and we went back and forth and ultimately. They built with a lower number, but not a no number because it is an asset for a number of low-income people and they don't wanna give up their car. And they do need to have a place to park it.
Yes, we also have had issues in Mill Creek where uh the vintage uh uh senior housing by the farm. Was built with fewer, a low number of parking spaces cuz it was qualified for the senior or retirement center requirements. And then it being a lot more cars than there were available spots and it caused a lot of consternation and news paper articles. Um of course, this wouldn't apply there because this is only near um high-capacity transit.
I would suggest, as you mentioned, having this discussion as we look at the, because the existing town center, that goes back and forth on. Oh, my business can't survive cuz there's not enough parking and there's ways to work through that and there's ways to develop parking. So it can be transitioned to something else as you get there, but. We're under a tight timeline and so the fewer things that we can have concentration about, so we go forward the more. That said, you know, send it out to us and I I invite everybody's comment.
Yes, and your comments and we'll.
Can I just add, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna change anything there from whichever is greater, that you do the same for part C there?
Yes, yes, there's there's those two here and here.
Cuz those are those are meant, I'm sure those are meant to basically be the same.
Um also, in in part, in part B, I didn't specify this on the the table. Uh we have one space per employee, um based on maximum potential number of employees per shift and one space for four beds. For visitors essentially, um cuz the people who live there cannot drive typically. Um and that's something that other cities have done as far as numbers, the state didn't specify specifically. Um uh so Emily suggested based on what other cities have done, that that one space per four beds. But we can modify that, it's not a state requirement.
And are these, so we wanted to have them placed by January?
Say what?
We wanted to have these in place by January, this isn't an end-of-the-year thing, correct?
Uh most of these are supposed to be done by January, not all of them required, there's not as, it's not as. Uh deadlines not as, there's no, we're not gonna lose any funding, it's not funded, done by January.
Okay.
Um that's not as, the deadline is not as uh strict as for the comp plan.
Okay.
Ideally, they'd be passed at the same time, but if we don't, it's not important. Uh next up, uh we required by Senate Bill fifty-two ninety to update regulations for processing. Development proposals. This one is really tricky to comply with because. Uh the legislature did not do a great job with some of their uh changes to legislation. Um for instance, they, there's something called a uh a project proposal, which we define as a development proposal. And it includes all land use permits, environmental permits and building permits. Legislature removed building permit from the definition, but did not remove references to building permits elsewhere. And so Department of Commerce actually had a task, a work group uh for how to implement this. And they recommended to the legislature that you gotta fix this cuz we don't, you don't know what you want us to do. So I also had trouble trying to figure out how to write these, but I did the best I could based on the commerce guidance and. So we have changed. Um some of our uh permit processing um processes. So specifically, we adjusted the uh processes for notices of complete application. And time periods and removed the requirement for a formal pre-application meeting. The big one here is time periods, uh it used to be that we had hundred and twenty days to complete a land use. Uh or building uh permit application, subject to certain exclusions. Uh such as if you submit, uh the city, if someone submits a application and the city replies. You need to give us more information, it's not good enough, we can exclude all the time it takes them to uh uh return the documents. However, it was not as strict, we had several um carve-outs that basically said, if we decide we need more time, we can have it. The state has decided you cannot do that anymore, you have to have a strict timeline, subject to certain exclusions. So we have, um we've done that, we.
Is the language that if it's mutually agreeable, you can extend it?
Yes, yes, it's mutually agreeable, you can, the city cannot unilaterally extend it. Um is it not some of this that Mill Creek has had an issue with, it's primarily large cities like the Belvues and Seattle's who have. Multi-year timelines, uh we typically are much faster than that, hasn't been an issue here, but we're complying with the new rules. Um we now have um deadlines are sixty-five days, hundred and twenty days, hundred and seventy days. Based on if there is public notice requirements, public hearings required uh as part of the permitting process. The other um important detail was that the uh. If the city does not meet certain um. Does not have certain measures in place and it does not meet those permitting deadlines. We actually have to refund applicants ten to twenty percent of their permit fees. Um however, we have added provisions that's will enable us not to have to do that. You had, there was a list of things you could do, if you met did all these things, you do not have to refund fees if you miss the deadlines. We have met three, you have to admit, have, you have to have at least. Things you could do, if you missed, did all these things, you do not have to refund fees if you miss the deadlines. We have met three, you have to admit, have, you had to have at least three, we've done three. Only one required a code change, the other process, internal processes. Any questions on that one? I know it sounds a little arcane, I worked in permitting for a while, so it was.
From past history, have we ever exceeded what we're trying to adopt? The timelines?
Um.
Without mutual agreement?
Not that I'm aware of, but we're also are not tracking it uh really well. One of the requirements is that Department of Commerce now requires cities to report uh yearly all of their um. Their timelines, so you have to say, how long it took you to reach each step of the process, so you can see how, how much uh cities are. Complying or not complying with those new deadlines. Having the twenty twenty-five, although. The com- Department of Commerce has not given us a form to su- uh to submit them yet, so. It's likely that most cities will not be reporting on time next year, it's just.
Did they provide a funding mechanism to pay for additional staff to add that?
Um, they provided funding for upgrading your permitting software if you use paper permits still, but not for hiring new staff. So they're probably just gonna punt the timeline for six months or something. Okay, uh, next up, uh, this, uh, we have to, uh, city's now required to allow for the setting of organic materials managed facilities. So we stuck that in our, um, our our title that has to do with uh with that.
Can we see what that looks like?
Sure.
Can we talk about what?
This one's, this one was a little, I didn't spend a lot of time on this one.
It's more like I wanna understand what it means, what the, what's our definition of that?
So.
So like on Smith Island. That's where Cedar Grove is. Cedar Grove is, yeah, it's that kinda thing, so we're not gonna process organic materials in Mill Creek.
It's likely not relevant to us, as as Mike pointed out, but we have to include it in our our code. There's no, there's really no place for it to happen here, there's no parcels big enough we could process these organic materials in a large facility.
Um, so what about, um, on thirty-fifth?
Pacific topsoil?
Yeah, Pacific topsoil, I realized they take in yard waste there and also put out compost. For sale or mulch for sale, is that not what this is?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what Pacific topsoil does, uh, I'm only familiar with their.
They do this.
Yeah.
Well, thirty-fifth, that is a landscape materials center, they're only allowed to have retail sales for that and to accept clean green.
Okay, so they don't, they don't necessarily do the organic materials management facility.
They're, they don't process it.
They don't process it there, they accept it there and then take it somewhere else, okay.
But would this code allow them to process there, because it's a requirement, I would think it does.
Sorry, could you move the little zoom window, just, I don't know what's right under it.
Let's defer this, I think we have to go look and see what the R C W defines organic materials management facilities to be.
I mean, we we would have to, um. Yeah, I mean, probably.
There's a lot of ref- referencing something else here to find out what we're supposed to, what what does this mean?
Yeah.
And what does that mean and what does this mean and what does that mean? Okay.
Let's find out some more for you.
Okay, I just, I'm, it's more curiosity than anything else, but, um. I, yeah, I'd love to know what's, what is our volumetric capacity required for the city? Um, I'm sure my own backyard compost pile is not what this is referring to, but I just wanna understand. How much is Mill Creek supposed to be managing in volumetric capacity at this point? And where would we do that, is the question?
Two more.
Okay, last two, uh, second last one, um.
Oh, one last, uh, do we need to extend the meeting?
We we are well over our extension meeting, so yes, we'll start on that next time cuz we didn't have it called out in our agenda.
Okay, we'll we'll see about doing that properly for next time.
Yes.
Uh, let's, next to it very quick, so I'll go through it quickly, um, uh, so this one is. Uh, the city recently separated the Public Works and Development Services Department into two separate departments. Public Works and community development, which means all the references to the combined department have to be separated, so I went through and replaced those. Um. And then lastly, there's a number of changes to spelling, grammar, inclusive language. Uh, you know, or I have some examples listed, for example, uh. Whenever there's a he or a her mentioned, I try to replace it with a they or a something that's not a pronoun, so like. There's examples like the director, uh, or his designated, I replace it with the director or the director's designated, so we're not, you know. Just being more inclusive there, um, and removing in uses of shall, which is discouraged in legal writing now. According to to the plain language guidelines, um. And also some small things like bar marshals misspelled.
So what what do you use in place of shall?
That's a great question, there's many things you use in place of shall, including um must or will or may. There is actually instances where it does mean that, I could send you the uh a fact sheet, it's, it surprised me. And it actually caused more than one court case to be hinged on the Niffish and a shell where it did not actually mean must. And so we're, I'm trying to remove those, just take it out, also, uh. Uh, it's recommended to have more plain language where possible, so people, more people can understand, and shall is just not a word we use. In plain language anymore, no one uses shall during everyday life, so we're trying to replace the things people would normally use. Maybe some could use it still, sure.
I, yeah, I realize I do because I'm a weirdo because uh it has to do with the work that I've done and it has a very clear definition and we do. And we specifically do not use must. Because that has a different definition.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send you a little document, I found it fascinating when I.
I will find it fascinating.
I would also, yeah, if you could.
Sure. All right, and that's all the changes I I have to share with you, these will be, uh, these are all ready, so I'm gonna post them on either tonight when I get home or tomorrow morning.
So that brings us to the for the good of the order, which is another thing that needs to change according to our bylaws, so we'll try and get that for our next agenda. I, I don't know, I just get these things from this age.
So that.
So, note for the good of the order, so uh a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.
All right, then we can end the recording and then we can answer that question of, what do we mean about the thing?
Got a whole thing, they wanna change.
Civil.